Tiffany's saying basically we can all pick up on yours.
Is this one? Who's this one?
Cause you're going there, I assume.
Oh, this one. Well, I know one of them is mine. So we don't need these then?
You do, but she's like, we'll pick up off your mic.
Okay, so I need to go to Teams?
Yeah. Jeff says she's gonna expedite all this, we don't have to do it anymore. Brandon Helsom. Just, I'm on my own computer. I don't know how to handle this. Talk like this. I heard it gone. Don't be like this, hey, speak in the mic. Yeah, you can join now and then. All right, I gotta make sure that mute your speakers down in the bottom corner. Mute and unmute your mic, it's right there.
My speakers are muted. And unmute my mic here.
I don't want you going blind.
Sound good? Can you hear me?
Right there.
Check, check, one, two, one, two.
We're down the block.
She calling him?
No. Spam. All right. Call the meeting to order, Tiffany, please take the role.
Consulman Workla.
Present.
Present. Present.
Consulman Harvey.
Absent. President, let the record reflect that we do have a quorum for Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025. Uh, we'll run down to recognizing persons in the audience. Would anybody like to get up? Come on down.
Uh, good evening, my name is Stephen Nemeth. Um, I wanted to say a quick, a few quick words concerning the TNR discussion on tonight's agenda. Uh, while I'm not familiar with our local TNR people, the concept of TNRs is like an acceptable alternative to animal control, collecting every stray cat and euthanize. Um, effective TNR, especially from a group of volunteers, uh, helps keep, helps keep the cost of running the animal control department low, while achieving similar results in the long run. I'm excited to see that the city council's opening the discussion back up for this and proposing some framework and ideas on achieving a common end goal, which is allowing TNR to operate without breaking city code or violating private property rights. Sitting down to compromise is an important step towards finding the best solutions, and I hope that both the city and the TNR organization will work together in good faith towards a resolution that is in the best interest of all parties, including the stray cats. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Anybody else? Come on down.
Hi, my name's Crystal Moore. I'm a member of Lost Paws, it's an amazing 501(c) organization that is thriving in this community. We have spayed and neutered over 320 cats this year and already seen a big difference in many areas. For example, Canyon Creek has seen a great impact from our services. We now see very few feral cats without an ear dip. We now have only, we have not only helped the feral population in that area, but we have also provided support for some residents in need. What we do, what we do should not be a matter of debate. We are not asking for a single penny and we are doing full-time work for free. The proposal I have read is wrong in so many ways. It appears the city wants to profit from the stray and feral cats in our community. The proposal would make it difficult for our 501(c) groups like ours to operate. For instance, how often the local animal shelter and the vets open on the weekends? They're not. Our work is done every weekend and recently with applications, we would see we have been transporting cats for three to four times a week. Furthermore, the proposal states that animal control should check each feral cat for illness, yet they have adopted out cat with full of worms and pregnant. This seems to be a personal issue between people instead of a decision that puts the cats first. Has the city looked into ordinances at other cities? Have you contacted other TNR groups with the 501(c) status? I genuinely believe the proposal needs significant adjustment. TNR groups are here to help the city and fills if you're trying to stop them. If the proposal is adopted, will the city step up and start trapping of feral cats themselves and help control the cat population? We have had applications come through that were sent to us by animal control. We have also heard from residents who stated that animal control was unable to assist them with cat issues. So what does City of Mountain Home plan to do? Simply just let these cats multiply? Or are you gonna continue to let your city residents trap them and dump them in the county? I sincerely hope you will look more closely at the proposal and consider the well-being of both of the residents and the cats, rather than just acting on someone's healthy advice. Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. Anybody else?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Nikki Davis and I'm a new homeowner of Fair Mountain Home. I'd like to share the experience that I have had with Lost Paws with you as well as them to let them know how much I appreciate them. Not long ago, I rescued some feral cats whom I like to refer to as homeless cats. Unbeknownst to me, three of them were pregnant. Being on a fixed income, there was no way I was able to manage, let alone afford to have them spayed and neutered, not to mention prevent them from multiplying. This is how Lost Paws and I began our relationship. Lost Paws rescued me from a complete and utter disaster that I was facing. Not only did they have all of them spayed and neutered, they provided the cats, my cats, with cat food and cat litter in the time of need. I'd also like to thank them as they successfully found new homes for them in which they currently reside with loving families and stability. Not all homeless cats are lucky, are as lucky as the ones I rescued. In fact, it's heartbreaking the number of them that will remain on the streets. As I got to know Lost Paws, not only did they help people with, that have gotten themselves into situations as I got myself into, they are successful in keeping the number of feral cats down in Mountain Home. By trapping and releasing feral cats in our community, which some may say is cruel or unnecessary, my experience has been but humane and done with care and compassion. And it is imperative to keep the number of feral cats down. Lost Paws has already reduced the number of multiplying cats by hundreds plus already this year. And my own residents on two separate occasions, eight cats, two original kittens, were trapped, spayed and neutered and released back onto my residence. I don't know about you, but I personally would prefer eight feral cats rather than twenty, thirty or plus more. This is time-consuming, not to mention very costly. Lost Paws donates their spare time and their own funds when donations are limited to help control our cat populations. In closing, I'd like to applaud them. Lost Paws for all their hard work and everything that they have done, in hopes that you allow them to continue their work as part of the city's team and help control our homeless cat population.
Thanks, Nikki. Ted?
My name's Ted Thompson. At the July meeting of the Airport Committee, it was my understanding the committee decided to pass to the city council the issue of congestion on the frequency at the airport, the current traffic advisory frequency used by all pilots to clear their traffic patterns, their landing, their takeoffs and all buildings around the airport. Uh, I was told, um, a couple of weeks ago by one of the airport committee members that that subject would be on tonight's agenda. I don't see it on the agenda, so actually we're not gonna talk about it. Very frustrating. This is a significant safety issue that can be solved very easily with a change of frequency. From the federal communications, that condition takes a simple form. There is absolutely no cost to filing the change request to get it. This change has been requested by the administrator of the state's Division of Aeronautics because it will help traffic, improve safety of traffic operating at Gooding, Jerome, Ontario. Mountain Home specifically, Mountain Home is in the middle of all this. And, uh, we would enhance safety at all those airports by changing the frequency. It's starting to take action. I was told that there's more assessment that the committee wants to do, I don't understand what that would be. Um, there was a, some data collected about a frequency congestion, uh, from the airbase, connected at the airbase. That collection doesn't get the full scope of the problem because it can't physically receive all the radio transmissions that are made. The pilots, they're 200 feet here, exponentially more frequency here, more transmissions on frequency than you can hear on the ground. But that, that data collection did prove that there are people talking on this frequency that are part of the Mountain Home Airport. And the possibility of stepping on a transmission that's needed at the Mountain Home Airport is, is very real. The consequences can be tragic. Not only for the pilots involved and their passengers, but potentially for people on the ground because those airplanes, when they collide, will fall. Today, uh, I believe you, councilman, received, uh, councilman, uh, received an email. Uh, I received a copy of that. In it, attributed directly a near miss we had late last week in the Mountain Home traffic pattern to the frequency congestion issue. The frequency was, uh, transmission on the frequency was stepped on by a transmission from Jerome. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking for you to make that call, to make the change. If we will do that, if not, council, will you please take the reins, take the lead and make this happen for the safety of the flying community here and for the citizens of Mountain Home and those who fly in southwest Idaho and eastern Ontario? Thank you.
Thank you for letting me talk. Uh, my name is Tisha Thonberg, I have two homes in Idaho. I have one down on North Wharton East and I have one out on Beeman out in the country. And I'm here to talk about the cats also. Uh, my personal experience is I've been doing this for three years on my own. Uh, Lost Paws, I saw them on Facebook, they've done an amazing job. And it started because I was feeding feral cats in my garage and my neighbors complained. So I quit doing that, I closed my garage and I quit doing it. But I rescued out of that. I ended up getting 34 cats and kittens adopted through Boise at, um, PetSmart. And I have a wonderful benefit that helped me because I couldn't get any help here. Our biggest problem in Mountain Homes, the Idaho Community Society, will not take any of our cats. Like, if you wanted to take them out there, they won't take any from Mountain Home. Idaho, you know, or animal shelter, they pretty much, they do get a few adopted, but they euthanize a lot. And I just don't, I don't understand why we will not do TNR in Mountain Home. Boise does it, Caldwell does it, I'm associated with all the groups in Boise that do it. I've read all the letters they put online. And it isn't costing the city any money and it will really save. It'll keep the cats from producing. And I heard, I didn't get to come to the last meeting, but I saw the one that they did online, so I could see it. And you had people complain about them peeing on the walls in town and I don't agree with that. It could be dogs, it could be homeless people, they don't know that for sure. And it would, and then they're gonna deal with mice and rats and stuff. So they gotta consider all these, this situation. And TNR works, and if you talk to the groups in Boise, you talk to the groups in Caldwell and Napa, it works. And it will get our population down. And I'll do whatever I can to help. And I, I, nobody's given me any money to do it. I did this, I'll have a pocket. And I still have five ferals living out in the shop, um, in the country that I take care of because I didn't want them euthanized. And I just, I think Lost Paws is, I, I think they're doing a wonderful job and, and I will help whatever I can. But I really wish you guys would consider changing the law here. Because, you know, cats are dumped, I'm sorry, but they are. I've, I saved all these cats out in the country. I had it all cleared out and I've had three dumped out by my house in about the past three months. People are dumping them because they're leaving. They're moving and I can't, we can't control what people do. But these cats are innocent, they deserve what they're getting. And they're not all feral because some of these cats are super friendly. So it's like people like, you know, nothing against the military because I'm retired Air Force. I was in for 33 years from a retired chief. But some of the airmen, when they can't find a place for them to go, they dump them. And that's why we have a problem. But I'd really appreciate you consider all the letters that have been written. I read all of them, they've got a great proposal. And whatever I can do to help, I will. And I appreciate you letting me talk. Thank you.
Thanks, Tisha. Anybody else? Okay. We'll go into the conflict of interest declaration as the councilmen receive information pertaining to otherwise had any contact with any person regarding any items on the city council agenda, so please set forth nature of contact. Mayor? Councilman Hardrow?
Um, I've had several emails, uh, I'll put down the list here. Email from Alan Bump regarding TNR, email from Beverly King regarding TNR, email from Deanna Moore regarding TNR, email from Larice Aker, uh, regarding TNR, a message from Callie Dennis regarding TNR, and a phone call with Chastity Minor regarding TNR.
Mayor, I had a few, not all of those, a few of the same people on the same topic.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Workla?
Same.
Okay. Nothing that would preclude you of making a decision on anything tonight?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, we'll run down to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda, um, one through seventeen that you'd like to poll, change, ask more questions? Um, anything that, uh, any questions?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Workla?
I wanna poll sixteen.
Sixteen.
On consent agenda and then, um, I just want clarification on Blue Yonder subdivision.
Which ones? Uh, that one is ten?
Yeah, so I spoke with-
Or nine?
Uh, well, yeah, nine and ten.
Nine and ten?
So I spoke with Chris Curtis and I, um, asked him some questions because Keller &amp; Associates gave us a wastewater report back in May 20 of this year in regards to that. Um, there was some consent, some, um, concerns listed on there. Chris, just, and I told you I was gonna ask you this. Just clarify that since this report has been published or given to us, um, these concerns have been addressed?
Yes, ma'am, they've been addressed. Uh, the thing that we did was we moved out of the line to, um, before you something.
And we are currently sitting at 1,245 wastewater EDUs, so we're sitting okay with wastewater EDUs.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? And then also I just wanted this for the record, um, that this Blue Yonder plat was approved back in 2022. Okay? So, all right, that's all. Just clarification, thanks.
All right, council. Mayor? Go ahead, uh, councilman Brennan?
Make a motion to pass the consent agenda as printed. I am pulling, sorry, pulling item sixteen.
Second?
It's been, uh, motion and second, any further discussion?
Mayor, I had one quick question regarding, um, consent, nine and ten. If we could tackle that before.
Yep.
I don't believe it warrants pulling. Um, per the findings of fact, uh, that were attached in our packet for planning and zoning, um, the recommendation at that point was to, was to approve the conditional use permit without the requested side yard setback deviations. And P&amp;Z at that point voted to deny the proposed, uh, prelim plat on this, on this lot size and layout, depending on, uh, the approval of the conditional use permit with the side yard setbacks. Since then, um, the city council has deliberated and decided to approve the, uh, the findings of, or excuse me, approve the preliminary plat and the conditional use permit. I just wanna ensure through our attorneys and land use that, uh, that the conditions as set forth in the preliminary plat carry forward to, uh, to the findings of fact here and approving the final plat. Okay.
Okay.
Answered, thank you.
All right, it's been motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for the question, councilman Brennan?
Hi.
Councilwoman Workla?
Hi.
Councilman Hardrow?
Hi.
All right, we'll run down to, uh, bold business, non-action. I'm just, right now it's a discussion on adopting city ordinances and policies for, regarding the, the TNR. So first, I'm gonna let, let Scott, um, take the wheel on this one as I think he's got a slideshow.
I do?
Okay. Councilman, um, really quick, just so the, the council can address some of the things, I'm gonna suspend Robert's rules for this action item, only so you guys can discuss it. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor, council, uh, Jeff Schroeder and I have put in a little bit of work over the past, uh, couple of months on, on a proposal, kind of creating the shell of what framework could exist that might permit, uh, TNR programs to operate independently, um, within the City of Mountain Home. Jeff, I know you had some upfront aspects that you'd like to cover on, on some of this.
Well, yeah, let me tell you. So, I'm your city prosecutor as well, I'm the city attorney. And I'm getting trudges in court handling, uh, disputes between neighbors over animal control. Sometimes people minimize it, but I think it's our most important job right now. I have people who complain about barking dogs. I've got like four minute tapes of dogs barking in court. I've had people who, just like one of the last speakers here, are in neighborhoods where people are keeping cats and have those cats become nuisance. I've had to prosecute those cases, I've had to take them to trial, and I've been successful. The bulk of my success is in mediating these disputes between people of their nuisance animals, using this legal framework, which I'm gonna explain in extreme detail, that gets, that ultimately gets what we want, which is compliance and, and safety of the public. I couldn't agree more with the folks, uh, who are advocating for TNR. In my conversations, and I've worked with Dr. Rosenthal over the past six or seven years, including a, a very tragic case with 58 animals being hoarded in an eight hundred square foot house. He and I agree on basically the bulk of how this should work. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that the people who are willing to and have stepped up and volunteered to engage in this activity don't imperil themselves by accidentally violating the statutes. And we can ensure that the cats and the other animals, basically this involves cats, are also kept safe and out of harm's way by being treated properly. It's important to note, as Councilman Hardrow mentioned, this is a, this is a discussion. We're just trying to show you the framework in which we lie, part of which is out of our hands because of state laws, part of which is entirely within our purview and your duty and your job as a city to maintain peace and tranquility and the general welfare of the public. So that we can proceed forward and try to get this done. We try to get it done in our arms around it so that these folks can go forward without risk of violating the law and being prosecuted. So as Councilman Hardrow goes through the slides, I'll go into the legal framework details. And the rest of it, as, as people have responded, they have questions, concerns and issues about some of the proposals. And with, Councilman Hardrow and I sought out and reviewed ordinances in many other cities throughout Idaho, many cities throughout, in other states, uh, on recommendations from Dr. Rosenthal regarding open feeding and things like this. And so we're trying to incorporate everything we can, but this is just a starting point. And this framework, which y'all end up having to write, is gonna try to make sure we can enforce it and not accidentally have somebody make a criminal and nuisance or other violation.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Tiff.
Um, I've been told that the audience can't hear very well, so if we can speak up. I would like the audience to know that our entire AV system does not work. So all that the mics are doing is capturing their voices for our public record, okay? So unfortunately it doesn't.
So hopefully sooner than later, we will have it fixed. Tiff is working on that currently with Brandon, our IT guy, so.
We just speak up as you guys present.
Thank you. Okay, um, thanks Jeff for the, the preface to this. Um, we really looked at this with the objective of multiple facets. To list a few of the objectives here, to reduce the feral feline colonies and the feral colony volume within the City of Mountain Home. We're charged with protecting and preserving the public health and safety. State statute empowers the city and Mountain Home Animal Control and Mountain Home Police Department. Um, we value and we wanna create further partnership with local nonprofit organizations wishing to perform TNR. Recognizing that trap, neuter, vaccinate and return is one facet of the total solution and create a distinction between return and unlawful abandonment. I think the shell of this creates, uh, the basis for a legal framework to perform TVNR within the City of Mountain Home. And we have some, uh, some further slides to help kind of give some context to what, uh, the state law is, what our local ordinances, um, perform currently, and then what, uh, some of the proposals are to work around behind that.
Okay, so the tenth amendment to the U.S. Constitution, uh, reserved all the powers that the people didn't grant to the federal government, to the people. People reserve all of those powers, including the police power. When Idaho adopted its constitution in 1890, Article 12, Section 2, is an express grant by the people of the State of Idaho directly to cities and counties. Any county or incorporated city or town may, in force, even in its limits, all such local police, sanitary and other regulations that are not in conflict with its charter or the general laws. So that's, you have a direct constitution granted to the people in the Idaho constitution to make things power, regulate the police regulations in the city. It's important to also note that this, this grant applies to cities and counties, which makes them co-equal, they're separate sovereigns. They don't stand in a superior subordinate relationship. So if cities ordinances don't apply to county, county ordinances don't apply to city. By Dusty Bonneville County, 1940. The next statute, item 50-302, cities shall make all such ordinances by laws, rules and regulations not inconsistent with the laws to maintain peace, good government and welfare of the corporation and its trade, industry and commerce. Cities may enforce all ordinances by fine, including infraction penalty. So there's your authority to adopt ordinances, including penalties. 50-304, cities may pass all ordinances and make all regulations necessary to preserve the public health. 50-319, this grant was originally passed by the state legislature in 1911. Mayor and council of each city shall have authority to regulate the running at large of domesticated animals to cause such, to cause such as maybe running at large to be impounded and sold, to discharge penalties to council and pound and keep and sell, so forth, so forth. Uh, next one, abatement, 50-334, abatement of nuisances. Cities have the power to declare what shall be deemed nuisances to prevent, remove and abate nuisances and levy a special assessment to defer to costs. The next part of Idaho code that governs this is animal care, uh, chapter 35 of Title 25. 25-301, since local law enforcement agencies shall be responsible for the administration of the provisions of this chapter as they pertain to companion animals and shall be authorized to call upon the divisions aimed at fulfilling. So companion animals are defined in this code as domestic animals. This, the purpose of this is to differentiate production animals to animal feed. This, the purpose of this is to differentiate production animals, so animal cruelty laws apply one differently when it comes to cattle, food, and livestock operations. 25-301, any enforcement restrictions, that's restricting animal cruelty laws on production animals. But otherwise, law enforcement agencies and animal care and control agencies that provide law enforcement or animal care and control services to municipalities may enforce the provisions of this chapter in that municipality. This is where, this is where we get into the meat of things, particularly with definitions that reside in state code. Abandon, 25-3502, abandon means to completely forsaken, desert, an animal previously under the custody or possession of a person without making reasonable arrangements for its proper care, sustenance, and shelter. Cruel or cruelty shall mean any or all of the following: to knowingly abandon an animal, or to negligently confine an animal in unsanitary conditions, or to negligently house an animal in inadequate facilities, to negligently fail to provide sustenance, water, or shelter to an animal. Custodian, and I think, we'll get to this in a minute when we talk about it, means any person who keeps or harbors an animal has an animal in his care or acts as caretaker of any animal. An owner, in the state code, means any person who has a right of property in an animal. I think that's an important distinction we can contrast in the city code when we get to that. 25-3504, committing cruelty to animals. Any person who is cruel to any animal or causes or procures any animal to be cruelly treated, or who having the charge of custody of any animal, either as owner or otherwise, subjects an animal to cruelty, shall upon conviction be punished in accordance with basically used to be a charge. 25-3511, requires people to care for animals. Every owner, custodian, or possessor of any animal who shall permit the same to be in any building, enclosure, lane, street, square, or lot of any city, county, or precinct without proper care and attention, as determined by an Idaho licensed veterinarian or a representative of the division, shall in conviction be in guilty in this. So there's a, there's a state law regarding cruelty, including definitions of abandon. I think it's important to note that what, what we'll get to in a minute is to try to get something done that doesn't qualify as a ban. That's what we're trying to get to. I have prosecuted these, again, with the 58 dog situation. That was fairly straightforward. I had another one where there was a concern about cruelty to animals. We had the state veterinarian, we had Dr. Rosenthal review the situation, and determined it didn't rise to that level. I thought it could. Anyway, this, this is something that I deal with, not all the time, but enough to do this trouble. Now, the Mountain Home's, we have definitions. Abandon, to completely forsaken, desert an animal previously under the custody or possession of a person without making reasonable arrangements for its proper care, sustenance, and shelter, similar to the state. At-large, our definition of at-large, the animal we have the, we have the ability to regulate. Any animal that is off the premises of the owner and not secured by leash or in a motor vehicle or on private property without permission of a person who owns or has the right to possess or use the property, or unrestrained by a leash on public property, who must expressly permit it by law, or unrestrained by a leash on private property open to the public without considering the property. That's our definition of at-large. Under our code, if you have an animal that's at-large, it's an infraction, second, answer later, convenience. Where is our, I have the rest of these spelled out in the next slide. Sorry. It is abuse. Any case in which an animal has been a victim of intentional or negligent conduct, blah, 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 including the lack of veterinary care and attention. Cruelty is similar to the state code by definition. Cruel or cruelty, intentionally, maliciously, or recklessly, or, notice the disjunctive there, recklessly abandoning the animal, or negligently failing to provide an animal with proper care, airspace, shelter, protection from the animal, safe and sanitary living environment, veterinary care, nutritious food, and sufficient supplies. Our definition of feral is a domestic animal that is not under the control and being cared for by any person, and which is returned to a wild or semi-wild state. A feral animal may or may not be owned by a person. And an owner, and this is the one, any person or persons keeping, harboring, possessing, caring for, or having any custodial duties over an animal. When I had, when I prosecuted a case with, was similar to the one described here, where a person had a whole bunch of cats, they're feeding in their garage, and getting out, and they were, it was cat urine and cat feces that were troubling the neighborhood, and those two people wouldn't come to an agreement, and I had to do a trial. But part of my proof was the owner. And so one of the, part of the evidence that I put on was the animal control person and the neighbor viewed that person feeding, caring for those cats. So even though they couldn't try to disclaim ownership, we had proof that they were being fed by that person. What that trial resulted in was those two parties negotiating, treating something how it's kind of like the last one. Just so you, that, that is an important term, if you want to tweak a little bit more, we have these terms that reside in state code, so limited in how far it's going to go, because our rules have to be consistent with not in conflict with the general laws of the state. 662, the purpose is to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of the city residents by regulating animal ownership and conduct within city limits. It's to build healthy relationships between people and animals by advocating for the humane treatment of animals, delineating an animal owner's responsibility for the acts and behavior of their animal at all times, enforcing animal-related laws and safeguarding residents from animal annoyance, intimidation, injury, and health hazards. So that's the purpose of your animal control section in the state code. Now, 664 requires, it's to be unlawful for any person to keep any unlicensed dog or cat over six months of an age within city limits. So you get a licensing. And B, it shall be unlawful to keep more than three dogs or more than three cats or a combination thereof. Now, I have a defense attorney bringing up this limit, which appears at first to just be arbitrary, but we got three. Well, some cities have four, some say five, some are, some are this, and some are another. But we have in this city, as I was able to figure out, as I was responding, this attorney's claim, that this was simply arbitrary creations, and may violate the U.S. Constitution. The American clerk has helped me out here. We have how many households?
Oh.
Sixty-one.
Yeah, it was like, yeah.
So you have 6,100 households. Each are eligible to have three animals. That's 18,200 animals. So in other words, as a governing body that sets a budget for your police and animal control, you know that you're potentially uncoordinated to have to regulate, under all of these rules, up to 18,000 animals. If it's four, it's 24,000 animals. If it's five, it's 30,000 animals, and so on and so forth. And so you have made a decision that you have enough money and resources to regulate up to 18,000 animals, and not anymore. And so that's where you can derive the justification for that number. That's the way you can look at that number. It's not, I just picked three out of the air. But that's something to do with your ability to devote city resources to enforcing all of these provisions of this code, over a universe of 18,000 acknowledged and licensed animals, let alone the wild one. 6611, animal cruelty, again, kind of near in state code, any owner of an animal who fails to provide an animal with proper veterinary care to prevent suffering or disease, a clean and wholesome environment in which live free from excessive waste, prevention of severe matting, and adequate veterinary care. That could be constituted. If you fail to do those things, and I've taken out much of the other parts of the code, all right, I'd like to look at what we're discussing here. 6612, animal nuisances, should be unlawful for any owner or responsible party of an animal to allow it to become a nuisance by allowing excessive accumulation of feces, impeding refuse collection by ripping any bag or tipping over a container of trash, or damaging the property of another. And this is where, if you leave your windows down, you, there's a good chance a casket here. An old black Ford pickup of mine is a little bit annoying, because it's got a casket, had a cat in it, and it won't go away, no matter what. Let's hear what it says. And then, a general animal nuisance occurs when an animal trespasses upon public or private property in such a manner as to damage the property. 6613, it's unlawful for the owner or responsible party of any animal to allow it to run at large in the city, responsible owner to have it on leash. If it's not on the owner or responsible party, it must be controlled by a leisure restricting device. 6615, animal feces to be removed by owners, as if you've got poo, you gotta pick it up. And that is, that is the city's constitutional, statutory, and city ordinance framework, as it stands today. And so when I pose a question about how we can make this work, and if there is a way, I think Councilman Harjo has worked very hard in trying to get a system in which we can define this activity, the way it's being done, to ensure that the people doing it are using licensed veterinarians to provide for adequate veterinary care for the animals, so that we know of where it's occurring, and we know that you simply, you simply open the door to a cat carrier and let it go, needs to have another step. The limits of that step, the extent of it, that's all for discussion, but that's something that needs to be addressed. So that's where we're at, and I'll turn it back over to you. Anyway, that's a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Schroeder. Obviously, with a lot of that, and distilling it down into consumable language, nuisances, feral cats have been known to create public nuisance for private citizens. We've, ourselves in this room, have received testimony to that. Public health and safety, feline-to-human communicable diseases. In every instance that, during our research nationwide, and including the state of Idaho, this is a factor of the primary concern of TNR. Several references, reference, and we don't have to jump into it at the moment, but the CDC had an instance in 2024 where 309 people were exposed to rabies from a feral cat in their community. It is a real issue, and one not to be ignored in the instance of public health and safety. Empowering Mountain Home Animal Control under several Idaho statutes, and obviously our own code here, but Idaho Code Title 50-319 is very expressed in the powers of the city to stand up in animal control, regulate matters of domestic animal care, and so on. Preserving the rights, how to preserve the rights of the public to maintain their own domestic cats pursuant to current hornesses. What's also missing there is preserving the rights of the people who want nothing to do with cats, is another concern. Remaining humane, ethically handling the various scenarios of sick, pregnant, injured animals that may be encountered in the process of trap neuter, vaccinate, and release. Program costs, obviously, we just went through our budget cycle. We heard from our police department and animal control and set a budget around those expectations, and that preceded this language, as well acknowledging that private donations are a limited resource. So how to achieve the thing while maintaining the cost at a reasonable rate. Usability, the program must be thorough enough to determine efficacy, but as well be user-friendly. Open feeding is one that, there were multiple instances in city code from around various municipalities in our state that outright forbid open feeding of domestic animals in the sense of maintaining either feral colonies or the risk of attracting unwanted pests and wildlife. There were many examples, including some that Dr. Rosenthal had discussed when Jeff and I were on the phone with him. Returning without assigning and accepting an ownership, perpetuating feral and at-large status is a big hurdle when it comes to the code. There's really, there's really well-defined code that provides what abandonment and what cruelty to animals looks like, and trying to find the way to not sidestep that, but to work within that framework and allow TNR to occur in a lawful manner was part of the goal. This is kind of a duplicated slide Jeff and I were working at the same time. This is a picture of a cat in front of Mountain Home Adult Training Academy that I took. So the idea of creating a legal framework, we just did in 2024, a pretty, maybe early, maybe earlier 2025, a pretty large 6-6 Mountain Home Code reboot to realign Mountain Home Animal Shelter to Mountain Home Animal Control and redefine that function as our police chief helped us define. To achieve TNVR, there are a number of ordinances that would need to be created, and some existing that would need to be addressed with additions or edits. To the concept of creating a legal framework, the ordinance is one thing, the permit process is one thing, and the program would be the ongoing program of how to fulfill that. So it's really kind of three components, as we've kind of seen other municipalities achieve it within their legal frameworks. The permit overview, the idea is that a permit would be similar to that which we're familiar with, with a conditional use permit, attaching compliance conditions and duties to continue the licensed activity. The intent is that that permit is at no cost. It is, it is essentially the agreement that the city has the power to create the standards and the regulation. This is your agreement and signature saying you'll adhere to that within your program. Available to 501(c) organizations, there's also some consideration to be made there that technically nonprofits can exist without a federal status in the state of Idaho. So that in and of itself is one of those points of consideration of what that language needs to look like. The idea is that the standard set forth in ordinance by Mountain Home Police Department and Mountain Home Animal Control Policy, who would have the authority to regulate this action, because this is what they're charged with, that we, the city, and our predecessors have given those powers to, the police department. The city shall govern the rules and regulations of TVNR, the prerequisite for organizations and their agents to sign the standards acknowledgement, follow the TVNR or TNVR form policies. I'll show you what an example of that can look like. Again, this, the powers of that function would lie with animal control and the police department, so what I've created is just kind of an example of what that data could look like as a one sheet. The concept of time on task for Mountain Home Animal Control, the idea of having a $2 per cat fee associated with the TNVR process, what we looked at in terms of what animal control charges currently for, for city tags, for spayed and neutered cat, it is $5, and a non-spayed or neutered cat is $10. And so we're trying to stay within the mindset of reasonability, accessibility, and what, what really the staff time is valued at in this case. And so this is straight off of our city website. The prohibitions, across nearly every instance that Jeff and I could find, there were, in the large majority, prohibitions on open feeding of colonies. The intent behind that, seemingly through all of the conversations we had with all these other municipalities, was that open feeding of colonies becomes the problem, and attracting unwanted pests, mice, rats, for the very thing that the cats are present and accredited with controlling, those actually, in most instances, attracted. Pocatello, for instance, has a prohibition on open feeding tied to wildlife and fishing game efforts, and that became a factor in their community. Trapping activity within- Trapping activity within a given perimeter of a public park, multiple instances in larger municipalities had programs and issues, and when talking with those program directors, their experience was that open feeding or TNR activity around public parks was creating a public health and safety issue for multiple reasons. Those being communicable diseases in sandboxes, feces accrual, unwanted pests, those kind of things, that were honestly the trigger for some of their TNR ordinance language. And the release of animals to an area rather than to a specified and identified owner, that becomes an issue where we have state statute and our local ordinance mirroring that lawfully owned and maintained animals have a specific and identified owner. That's the purpose of us having licenses, that's the purpose for quite a few of the state statutes that define custody or ownership and those kind of things. Potential ordinance updates, because of this concept, here's a list of just the spitballing of what potential new definitions we might need to add. This is probably not the entire list in grand scheme of things. Some of these mirror state statute others, quite frankly, need a little filling out. As this concept has progressed, even as far as this afternoon, new ideas and concepts of, or considerations of what need to be fleshed out either in discussion or left to ordinance language or left up to the interpretation of animal control and Mountain Home Police Department. Stepping through some of the potential ordinance updates for existing ordinances, animal nuisances. The idea of creating Section C, it shall be unlawful for any person to keep any animal on any property located within the city when the method of keeping or harboring such animals constitutes a public nuisance or a menace to public health and safety. The mindset of this is to give more to for the neighbors who are afflicted by nuisance created by feral cats. Those property owners have property rights, and this provides them with the framework that they can make their complaint on. Records required if a program like this were to be instated to essentially have some mechanism that the TNVR form becomes the traveling document and the official record that that action happened. Feeding of feral cats prohibited, again, in large quantity across almost every instance of codified TNR, TNVR ordinances, the feeding of feral cats, just open feeding without the intent of trapping, was expressly prohibited. The instances that, in talking with some of the program directors, where they had issues within their municipalities of individuals going out and just opening a fifty-pound bag of cat food in a public park and attracting birds and wildlife and feral cats and mice and rats and everything else, and that became problematic. Within our town, this picture was one that I took in the downtown alley behind several restaurants, where clearly it is food and water that's being maintained by some entity in an effort to maintain the colony that exists in the downtown alleyways. Further proposed ordinance, this captures kind of the heading and the purpose of what proposed six dash six dash twenty-four would be, establishing the purpose, and then setting forth the remainder of the text that we would need to further, we have kind of a very early draft of some language that brings the best things of all aspects from around the state and honestly, from around the country, that fulfill prerequisites, a standard for permit, grounds for revocation, and limitations. Again, this is a picture that I took in our downtown corridor in an abandoned property where there have been multiple reports of feral cat activity, and Mountain Home Animal Control had to step in and deal with these cats specifically and quite a few more. Onto probably the worst-looking workflow that I've ever made in my entire life, so apologies for that. The concept, a cat gets trapped through the TNVR process. There's a form that would be filled out and presented to animal control with the trapped cat. Now, this trapped cat could be a feral that is unaltered, this cat could be a feral that has been TNVR'd before, this could be a domestic cat that if my cat got out accidentally and was trapped through the process of the trapping aspect of TNVR, that those and more could be the scenarios. The idea then is that this trapped cat and its one-to-one form go with the cat to Mountain Home Animal Control to be checked for chips, licensing, signs of ownership, that kind of thing upfront, that's the staff time. That traveling document of the TNVR form could look something like this. The date of trap, name of the person doing the trapping, the organization association, the TNR permit number, the address or geolocation of the trap within the city of Mountain Home Limits. Geolocation, we all have smartphones in our pockets, and we can achieve those geolocations if there isn't an actual address associated with that parcel. Property owner and name, property owner name and contact info for those instances that TNVR is requested by a citizen and one of the partner groups goes and performs that action on their property at their request. Again, data gathering. Mountain Home Animal Control signature would come at the point in which a form like this and the cat, or cats in a one-to-one relationship would get presented at animal control. Again, these are suggestions. What animal control's disposition is that? TNVR is approved. Awesome, take that cat to a licensed veterinarian, circling one of these. If the cat has been trapped previously and sterilized, and that is over a year or three years ago, depending on the efficacy of a rabies vaccine, to re-vaccinate. If that cat shows sign of ownership, it's, Mountain Home Animal Control is the entity that's charged with returning those cats to the owner and following the law as set forth already. Mountain Home Animal Control impound for the instances that there might be property disputes, health concerns that would eliminate that cat from being a part of the TNVR process or some other unstated aspect here. At the point where, say, TNVR approved is decided by Mountain Home Animal Control, that TNVR group and the cat proceed forward to a licensed veterinarian who performs whatever actions are associated with that, vaccination, sterilization, ear tip, and any other care that might be needed. And then, that group returns that cat to the place of its original trap. That's the concept of TNVR, trap, neuter, vaccinate, and return. And the idea is that this document is compliant with all the records requirements that we have in our ordinance already. There could be a notes section on this for deviations from the workflow and that kind of thing. There are a great number of possible deviations from this workflow, and that is part of the reason why this concept is taking longer to encompass for myself and Mr. Schroeder. The possible permutations is massive, and the question remains, do we attempt to capture every one of those scenarios in code? Do we capture that in a policy that is outside of code? Code creates the permits, but the policy is created and maintained by Mountain Home Animal Control and Mountain Home PD. There is a lot left unknown and not explored. Quite frankly, I've sat back and after authoring a chunk of this, and thanks to the help of Mr. Schroeder and filling in all of the legal aspects, I sit back and I look at this as a presentation through a different lens and go, okay, what would I think if this was presented to me? And I'm gonna be real frank, there's, there are so many aspects of current state statute and current Mountain Home Code that already provide the legal framework to maintain domestic I'm gonna be real honest, I look at this and I go, okay, despite the fact that this was a chunk of work, I look at it through the lens of there are values to TNVR as a program. There are also established Idaho code and city ordinance that do cover these things in the basic sense. Really, this is the hope, the creation of this is a hope to offer the olive branch to all of the TNVR groups that wish to perform these functions within the city, create some standardization behind it without being terribly burdensome. And as well, the city of Mountain Home and its sub-agencies of the police department, Mountain Home Animal Control cannot operate or endorse outside of what is lawful. We can't, in my opinion, and this is my opinion, we can't offer this type of permit without requiring that the letter of the law is met otherwise. Licensed veterinary care is non-negotiable in the state of Idaho. The Department of Occupational Professional Licensing requires veterinarians to be licensed. They require rabies vaccines to be administered by licensed vets. There's a great number of those concerns that are difficult to capture in what would look like a concise code section. The more I write ordinance about it, the more I go, man, this proposed section could be larger than the remainder of six dash six in its entirety. So, I'm not keen to go down that road, if I'm being honest. I think concise law languages is necessary, and that's why, again, today is just a discussion because there's not enough done to say that it's a finished product. And that is all I have.
I'll say, man, you guys threw a lot of work into this, trying to do it, you know, we always say government works slow so we can get it right, and you guys have done a lot of work, and I commend y'all for that. Man, that's a lot to chew on right there. I like the, I like it that everyone is on the same page of, you know, you have the one cat, let's just say it's a cat, and you know where it came from, you get it, you go through all the steps, and then you release it back out there, you know, with all the steps done, and then five years down the road, it gets caught again, and you can pull your, the data, you know, from the computer going, oh, well, they had the vaccine this day, they're marked, they're tipped, they're all that. So, we can send it back out there with more data put into the system. So, like I said, you guys crushed, you guys did a lot of work. Man, it's...
But there are also, thank you, and I appreciate that. There are also many, and I'll open the window to my, to my mindset here of questions this section raises. How many, how does this stack up against any sentiment that, and I didn't finish the sentence, but I know it, of what a private resident would be in opposition to if they chose not to want to have feral cats in their, in and on their property? Under this language, a private citizen is now forbidden from obtaining traps from Mountain Home Animal Control and applying food to the trap. We should not forbid private and unaffiliated citizens from following the current law and procedure to lawfully abate their nuisance. Does this language undermine Mountain Home Animal Control and Mountain Home PD and the authorities that's given to the city and to those entities by state statute? Are there any unintended consequences? Are there any contradicting sections? Who's legally responsible for managed feral cats? If that can bite someone, who is responsible? Who is responsible for adjacent property damage or nuisance? What to do with adoptable kittens? What to do with pregnant cats or in utero kittens? What happens in the scenario that a previously TNVR'd cat is brought into Mountain Home Animal Control by a private citizen as a nuisance cat? If such cat would be humanely euthanized in accordance with law, surely this would create some outrage after funding was spent to TNVR them? Those are real scenarios that this is my attempt at shooting holes in the process and the thought, to be honest about where our priorities can lie and what the program is meant to achieve. A lot of unanswered questions as of today.
Go ahead, Jeffrey, this is open right now.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. I have a couple little things that have come up in correspondence I've received from folks today, including correspondence from Dr. Rosenthal, but also just thoughts that I had as we've been discussing here. One is the notion of having an owner accept responsibility for a cat. That I think we could tweak, because we have areas where there's adjoining property owners or a whole neighborhood that's all in on it.
Can you guys hear Mr. Schroeder back there?
Okay.
Can you talk louder, please? Which is saying super important, and I want them to hear you.
So, I think, I think one way we can address that is if there's a neighborhood where everyone's in on it, then they can jointly accept ownership and return to cats. In other words, so, as we were discussing this with a representative of one of the organizations, this three-animal limit comes up, and it is what it is, but it's also report-driven, it's complaint-driven. I'm not gonna say that we're gonna turn the other way and say you can violate the law by exceeding the number of cats, but what we can say is if there's six adjoining property owners, then yay, you get eighteen. To Councilman Harjo's point, well, what about the seventh property owner that's now beset by eighteen cats? So now you have eighteen, you have six culprits who can be charged with animal lard. So that's the part of accepting ownership and accepting responsibility, and then if those animals don't present a nuisance, I'm never gonna hear about it. And frankly, it takes quite a few calls before it ends up being ticketed, it ends up in my lap, and we end up dealing with it. So I think there's a way to get, to address the concerns about accepting ownership and accepting responsibility so that the whole community is in on this concept, which is completely contrary to all of our codes, community cats. There's a way to do it, it's done in fact, and again, it's complaint-driven, but I think we can alter this, not alter the existing code, but we can alter this TNR system so that that acknowledgement of ownership comes with a small price. Accept some responsibility for the conduct of the animal that you want to protect and preserve, and you want to neuter and back. So I think there's a, I think there's a way to do that. I think there's a way to write this so that the private citizen trapping the animals isn't doing unintended food. There's certainly provisions in this state code about the definition of abandonment that we can define into the TNR program, so that it's not like I'm just opening the gate, letting the cat go, because it's without reasonable provision for its care. Okay, I know that this woman is gonna take care of this cat, this person. So there's ways, and again, the feedback is important. Some of it is relevant, some of it we've thought of, some of it is simply, is not ready for primetime because the ordinance hasn't been written, but the feedback helps guide the ordinance. But I think it's very important for everyone to be on the same page regarding the existing state law, the existing power, and the difference. I think it's a real important difference between the confined area of a city within the city limits and the country. When you're out on Beeman Road, when you're somewhere out in the country, there's a different way that community cats can exist that doesn't require... way that community cats can exist that doesn't require, when we have 5,000 square foot lots, one next to the other, next to the other, next to the other, in that confined area or in a confined downtown area, there's a real issue that could become a serious problem if these aren't treated the way they're supposed to under the code. But I think that there's a clear way forward to endorse and adopt this and give a yes to everybody that wants to do this, as long as we can protect those rights, so.
So, what we can control is the city code, sitting up here. That's what we can, can control is the city code. What we also could control is empowering the Mountain Home Animal Control Center financially with the budget, right? So, if that has not been done because we have a problem within this community of cats, feral cats, or cats running wild, then, then I failed, okay? Because I, as a councilperson, need to provide the finances for the organizations to support that issue, okay? So, if I have failed, either I have to make it where we financially can support the government entities to combat this issue, or support the 501(c)(3)'s to combat this issue. But we can't just say it's not an issue, right? So, and I don't think we're saying that, but 662 says, "Mountain Home Animal Control Center is to serve city residents in a timely manner," right? I think that's what the issue is here, probably, I don't know, due to financing, staff, but it's not been done in a timely manner, and that's why these cats will produce like rabbits, so, to say. So, um-
Produce like cats.
Produce like cats, there you go. So, I, I support TNVR 100%. My father lives out in the country, I understand about the dumping thing that someone mentioned as well, he can't have it all the time. So, I want to see if we can get to that point where we, like you said, we can work with the organizations, or we provide a governmental avenue that we are fixing the issue. So, and you mentioned both tonight, right? Yeah. So, I am so glad that this wasn't an action item, and it's just for discussion, so please, with your group, take all this information and give us some feedback, constructive criticism, whatever, so we can all, you know, work along and come to a plan.
Can I ask one question?
I don't know.
Come on up, come on, come on down.
I'm Beverly King with Los Pines, TNRV, and just with this, I have a question. So, we, as of, as of, what, three days ago, we have feed and neutered 323 ferals. So, are you saying we have to pay $2 every time we get a cat fixed for something that we're doing on our own time and volunteering and, I mean, we're doing the work that you guys should have been doing, but then you're going to charge us $2 to do a community service? I don't get it.
The answer to that question is no. The answer to that question is, this is a proposal that Councilman Harjo wrote that threw a number out there. There's no number, there's no ordinance that's been written, there's a fee we could collect, that's, this is just in the design phase.
But I just don't understand why you guys would collect a fee from us when we're doing the work.
To support our Animal Control Center as part of this, and so, like, we don't 100% fund it, but, but we also share in the cost of, of the increased burden. Who are you paying for?
We use several vets, we go to Boise a lot.
Okay.
We've gone to Hall Valley, we've gone to other vets. We don't use nights, we've had, we're not even going to go there, we don't use nights.
So, Miss King, so that's why, that's what I'm saying, right? So, there's a lot of information presented, and I think we're open to hearing many different scenarios, feedbacks, where you guys can come and propose to us, so please just send us emails. Do you want them to send to us and then send it to you, because you're intimately involved with this? So, do you, or can they send it directly?
We can send it to me.
Directly to you as well? Okay. And then I would, I'm going to make a motion, or, no, I guess I can't make a motion, I'm going to, I guess at final comments, request to see if we can put this back on the agenda as an action item in a month, the end of October, two months? Okay? Okay, the end of November, to then vote upon, okay? And that will give us plenty of time to collaborate, right, and just come to the best solution.
Yeah, because there's another concern is, we do trapping on our, we work, we go to school, we have families, we trap at night and then very first mornings, weekends. You guys, nobody here is open on the weekends, that's when we do our trapping.
And this is the other thing I recommend as well, come to every single city council meeting in the next two months and tell us what you're doing, right? Put it on record, and tell us as a body, instead of maybe just one or two of us or something. Tell us as a body, and it's on record, and then that also might help us figure out the best avenue forward, so.
Just, I mean, because there's thousands, I mean, there's thousands of cats out there, not just hundreds, there's thousands. Thank you.
Can I, I, I think on the appropriateness level, the emails should go to Tiffany and not to our city attorney directly.
Okay.
So, I mean, then they're, then he's effectively working for every citizen, like-
Okay.
That's not appropriate, I don't think.
And then she would disseminate it to Mr. Schroeder and council then, right? Is that how that would go?
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah. Anything, oh, go ahead, sorry. Yeah, just to- I won't go through dissecting this, I think you guys have done an outstanding job, like, you put in a lot of work and effort, just like the mayor said, and I applaud you for that. I do, I do now, and I will come up with a few more questions, but the, I, if I'm hearing you right, Councilman Harjo, the feeding of feral cats prohibited, you know, like, proposal, I understand where that's probably causing a problem as well. It's like, but as, as the testimony we've received here, Mr. Schroeder is the argument of humanity, right? Everyone's going to say, what, you're going to tell me I can't feed an animal? Like, how's that, how's that going to stand up in front of a judge?
So, that's kind of the responsibility of an owner. So, if an animal's truly feral, truly just part of a running around bunch of cats, you don't have an obligation or duty to feed it. And you don't have to walk 10 feet into the, into a national park, or I just downloaded the fish and game pamphlet on feeding wildlife. Don't. It's inhumane to do it because they can become dependent on the food source.
Correct.
It starts attracting other animals, who then can interact with ones that are actually owned and are loved, and fighting with them, I've had feral cats, I've had less now. Dr. Rosenthal talks about the implementation of covered garbage cans, virtually eliminating food sources and eliminating a lot of problems with feral animals in alleyways, badgers, scum, cemurkings, and weasels, there's still a few out there. So, but you're exactly right, and that was something I noticed in these definitions. Well, if you see this animal out there, and you have a sense of humanity, and particularly with one that has been abandoned by somebody unlawful, comes up to you, now, I mean, we're all people, and we want to help them. These folks, they have this passion and this love for those animals, and so, that's where it's a two-way street. You accept the responsibility to keep this animal alive because you love it and you care for it, and it shows affection to you. So, now you have an obligation, if you want to accept it, to care for that animal, or you can put it through this program and then see if someone will adopt it, or it can be part of your collection of up to three animals that you get to care for. So, so, the unattended feeding needs some tweaking in terms of its definition and the way it's done, but if you cut fling out for animals that you think are yours, then I don't think you're going to get busted. What I would have to do for proof is, is the same way that Fish and Game would prove that somebody is, they busted a guy for cutting a cornfield and leaving the corn out simply to attract ducks. It was a, it was a federal crime, right? So, it's, it's how can I prove that intent?
Sure.
Whose cat are you feeding? Those pictures very show that that's not necessarily somebody's cat, so you figure out who put it there. So, anyway, I'll stop lawyering up. But that's, that's what you're bringing to the other side. And it's something that I caught when I was going through these definitions.
Okay. I think we're going down the right path, totally. I'm, I'm skeptical, and I mean no offense by this, I'm skeptical that those that are passionate about it will, will follow the ordinance, because it is very restrictive compared to, to the current process. We've already got a couple of emails and testimony about a $2 fee per cat, and the humanity of feeding animals, and, you know, if they trap a cat that hasn't ear clipping already, like, are they going to take it in to get vaccinated again, or is that just money that's, you know, better spent on simply neutering rather than vaccinations? But regardless, keep going, doing good, yeah.
To follow up on that last segment of point, the, the concept of if a, if a missing owned cat gets trapped in this process, is that, the, the concept of where that cat might end up in final disposition, is that, is that my cat that doesn't wear a, that doesn't wear a collar inside our house, and it's not an indoor/outdoor cat, but has happened to get out of a window one day? And that cat, while mine is sterilized, that's one thing. But my cat is ultra-friendly, and if that cat enters this process, how am I insured as, as the owner of that cat that I'm going to get my cat back without the checks and balances in a program that is without bounds, right? And that, again, is out, Mountain Home Animal Control's purview, as we've charged them, and our predecessors have charged them, to manage that aspect of things. I, I think there are a great many questions to be answered before this comes back to us.
I also think if you're a, an owner of a domestic animal like a cat or dog, and you're not shipping them, that's on you.
Agreed. Agreed. So, I, I appreciate you guys hearing us out, this is obviously a long topic with a lot more to go, so, we will work to get that buttoned up and presentable in two months.
Jeff, chief back there, telepath patrol, Scott, or, sorry, councilman, great work, that's, that's a lot, lot to present, so, all right, thank you guys. All right, we'll run down to new, sorry, council, do you have anything else? No? No? All right, we'll go back on Robert's rules, we'll run down to new business items removed for the consent agenda. Councilwoman Workla, item 16?
Yes.
All yours.
Thank you. Okay. Let me just pull it up. Okay, so, on this resolution, it's stating that whoever serves on planning and zoning will also fill the role for the impact fee committee, correct? Correct.
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, we have, how many people on the impact fee committee presently?
Three.
Three? Are those individuals then going to be added to the planning and zoning committee?
I think we had the plant, no? No.
Why? Why? I don't know what that is. I'll just say right now, I will not vote for this if we cannot transfer the remaining individuals from the impact fee committee to the existing planning and zoning commission. The city, I think, has a image of picking and choosing certain individuals to fill certain roles, and this is a prime example of that happening. So, no matter your feelings on, on certain things or certain people, if they've been fulfilling a role, and they're dedicated to filling that role, and they've proven that they have been showing up and doing the job, and they still want to carry on to P&amp;Z, if the number's allowed to have that amount on planning and zoning, bring them over. The second thing, if they're doing, if their duties are increased, I want to request to hold a public hearing to increase their wages from $60 per meeting to a more appropriate amount. That is determined by council.
Okay. Anything else, council? Mayor, Councilman Brennan?
In, kind of going along with Councilwoman, Councilwoman Workla's comments, the, if you'll help me, I know for, for sure the planning and zoning committee members are designated by ordinance as to certain factors, right? There can be, you know, just as an example, this is not the ordinance, one lives in the city, one lives out of the city, one's a builder, one's a realtor, one's a, right? And so, each, each one of those type of things has to be fulfilled, and I have not looked at the current vacancies and, and which, which ones need to be filled still, but I think that's a very pertinent reason as to why we can't just simply transfer, depending on how they fit, why we can't just simply transfer everybody from one committee to the other, because the ordinance simply, I'm guessing, does not allow for it. It's, it's not just warm bodies in the seats, it's very specific things that you do as a profession or where you live.
Sure. Mayor.
Councilwoman Workla?
Can we ask legal then? Do those three individuals on the impact fee committee, would they qualify, or would they be able to fill that role in the legality issue that Councilman Brennan was mentioning?
So, the P&amp;Z commission doesn't have the requirement for specific work areas. That's a requirement in the state code for impact fee advisory. City code, state code for planning zoning commission just requires living within the city limits, living in the area of impact, living in the county, and so forth. And so, the requirements for a impact fee advisory committee require two members of the impact fee advisory committee to be active in development, real estate for development, and two who are not. And so, you have a couple of Venn diagrams that coincide, and they coincide well with the existing makeup of the P&amp;Z commission as it is. So, whether or not you can have more members and transport them, that's policy, but in terms of checking the boxes for the content of the P&amp;Z commission you have.
And we can have up to 11, I think? Up to 11 on P&amp;Z? What's the number?
How much?
It's 11. Okay.
It's 11.
Okay.
You could have an even number if you wanted, making it more fun.
That's the only two things that I wanted to point out with this current resolution.
Counsel, what do you want to do? Councilman Brennan?
For the time being, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 20-25R.
Second? It's been motioned and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the question, Councilman Harjo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Workla?
Nay.
Councilman Brennan?
Aye.
All right. Run down to action item number two, items deliberation decision on planning zoning commission, recommendation of findings and facts to amend Turner House Depot, Plumer and Platt. I think we got two gentlemen. Come on down. All right. Usually, I'll, I have two seats up there, but we have an extra attorney today, so we'll-
I'll just-
Grab one, yeah, grab one of that.
You can head down the road for a little bit, I'll be back.
All right, counsel, what do you got?
Okay.
Here, Councilman Brennan?
Good evening to the development team here, I appreciate it. Yeah, would you, would you guys just basically, for the record, fill us in on the difference between the last time you were here and the request versus all the little facts and changes as to what we've done differently?
Sure, ma'am, thank you, counsel. First off, my name is Phil Reese, I'm with Handgrove, the owner of Turner House Depot LLC, the owner of the project, and is a veteran of JUV engineers. We were here last November presenting a proposed change to an approved planning and development. At the time, the changes that we presented last November, and I know you just asked for the change since that time, but I just want to make sure we're all clear on it. We had, the existing approval has a community center in the northeast corner- We had, uh, the existing approval has a community center in the northeast corner, it's got a certain number of live work units also in the northeast corner, that's the existing approval. What we proposed last November was to, um, convert the live work units we approved to straight up townhomes, attached, uh, single family housing and move the community center and, uh, concentration of community amenities down to more of the middle of the development site. That's what we proposed last November. We had no commercial component in the project. Council's direction to us was because you're taking the commercial away from live work units, we'd like to see a, uh, we'd like to see a commercial component, a neighborhood commercial component where neighborhood commercial uses could be located. So, uh, while it's taken unbelievable ten months, we're back, the only change is to remove, I think it was about eight townhomes and now we have a, uh, neighborhood commercial pad of about ten thousand square feet, the pad, the parcel is about ten thousand square feet, um, and that is right at the intersection of Marathon Way and the main, uh, the main entryway to the development. And it's, the only difference between what we have discussed, I, I proposed putting it up in the northwest corner, across from Rockford Miss Park, um, in discussion with J U B engineers, uh, we decided that it would be better to have it right near the neighborhood more central to the community and accessible from that transportation perspective. Is that any good to say?
Not quite. Um, isn't there another aspect about a park?
Um, the, well...
Like the, the dedication?
Pardon me?
The dedication?
Um, that's, yeah, that's correct. I apologize. And that was part of the proposal last November was to convert it from, uh, in the original approval, the park was to be built and then dedicated to the city for maintenance. This proposal, um, consistent with what we proposed last November, is to maintain the park with the HOA. The HOA is going to vote, yeah, we'll build it and it's gonna be maintained by the HOA rather than the city.
Mayor.
Councilman, uh, Harjo?
Uh, Phil, and for some aspects, city staff, uh, the commercial pad, um, the request in the, in the subsequent agenda item here is effectively a rezone of that small parcel to C three from R four P U D, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Go ahead, uh, Brenda. Sorry, I, I know your face.
It says C one.
C one.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Workla?
Councilman Brennan, I'm gonna ask you a question. So you've been involved with this since the beginning, right? I think it's been a while. And so was the initial proposal that city council approved was that there would be commercial development mixed in with residential, right?
Yes.
And then when they came back the last time, it was just all residential, so then that threw council for a little bit of a loop. And then now this proposal with putting commercial back in, is it the same amount of commercial that you approved initially?
No.
It's not?
No.
How much is it?
I don't know the, yeah.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I don't know the exact difference, but it was, how many were the live work units total? Ten or, or?
In, in total in the original was twenty-two live work units.
Twenty-two live work units, so two stories, the bottom unit was a barber shop or whatever you wanna call it. And I, I don't know the total square footage of that, uh, but the request here is, uh, you know, one pad side essentially, ten thousand, uh, feet of, of ground, earth and, and with a building, I think it said not to exceed, that could be around thirty-two hundred square feet. So that, I don't, I'll let the developer speak on that, but that's, I don't know, two, maybe two or three small, uh, if they were to divide it.
The building was sized to house two or three small neighborhood commercial type uses and the lot was sized to handle a park for the facilities, is that correct?
So, Mayor?
Council, Councilwoman Workla?
So, why was there a deviation from the initial, um, approval from council?
The, the reason that we came back and, and we discussed this last November was that the, the live work units, we haven't had success, we didn't see a commercial demand for the, in last November when we presented this, we presented, um, a study by an economist and a letter from a commercial broker that showed to the demand for neighborhood type commercial uses in that location given nearby commercial uses in both downtown and, uh, on Air Bay Street.
So you did, you made the decision that you think the city of Mountain Home doesn't need the commercials, so then you changed the plan from initial, from what city council approved?
We came back and requested a change, um, Councilwoman, and when we were here last November, we discussed with council and they said, well, we're okay with removing the, the live work townhomes, but we would like to see a commercial pad and we specifically discussed putting a commercial pad up in the northeast corner and also requested that we make that change and come back. It wasn't approvable the night we were here last November because, um, the city determined, the city attorney determined that that was a change of substance, so it had to go back through the P and Z, which we've done in the interim. That's my recollection.
You're correct. Oops.
Mayor?
Councilman Brennan?
Um, I think, I think you guys have come back with, um, the, the general idea of, of what we asked for. I don't know if we specifically said one pad, maybe, maybe we did, one building. I don't, I don't recall and I apologize. And, uh, um, I, there, there's one thing that, uh, frightens me on this and I had a conversation with our, our legal counsel here too, is, um, I, I may not word it the most appropriately, sometimes I do that and I apologize, but, um, intent is a whole lot different than action, right? And so if, if on this plan, if we were to approve it today, your, your intent could be to set aside ten thousand square feet and someday build on it, but the action of actually building on that, really, there's no teeth for that to ever come to fruition. And, um, similar to what Elmore County has done in their, uh, decision processes, um, I'd like to see in a development agreement, a guarantee that that comes, uh, as part of your phases and not as the very last thing when all, however many hundred homes are in there, um, but, uh, like somewhere in the middle, it says, um, before we're granted, I don't know, phase three and four, we, we will put this in. Um, and that's important to me for the, uh, development agreement type actions.
Um, may I ask Councilman, uh, that seems reasonable to me. Uh, there are, I believe, two hundred eighty-seven residences made up of, of townhomes and single family detached lots, um, before we come in for the first phase that includes the second half. I mean, so if we got two eighty-seven, one, you know, half, when we come in for the hundred forty-fourth lot, we need to be developing that site, something to that effect?
Like you'd have, yeah, like, something to that effect, like, you, you must put in a thirty-two hundred square foot commercial building or whatever square foot the council agrees on and you're willing to do. I just, I saw thirty-two hundred feet in the documents that have been provided to us.
Could, could the condition be crafted to say, and this is something, I mean, we have the development here and I think if the motion included a request or a requirement that, you know, before the approval for the phase that includes the hundred forty-fourth lot, would it be possible to say that the commercial parcel needs to be developed in accordance with city zoning requirements for C one zoning, this type of parcel? If we say the specific building, I mean, I, I guess I'm, 'cause I don't know exactly what we'd build there as I sit here today.
So, so Phil, like, I, I think what we're trying to say, well, I'm not gonna speak for you, Councilman, I think what we're trying to say, or I'm gonna say, is when you pull your hundred and fortieth building permit, that that, something, you already have something in mind going there, that, that the gas station, a convenience store, a barber shop, a, uh, something that's commercially oriented for that space. I think that's, is that what, is that what I'm, yeah?
Maybe there's two or three things, like he said, two or three small shops.
Yeah. But we, we, you, you, you do you. So when you come back and you're gonna pu, pull your next phase of the hundred and some, you're saying, this is what I have, council, and it's gonna be a gas station, it's gonna be a general store, it'll be barber shop, something that you can do two or three different entities in there that accommodate all those citizens there. You know, what, I'll leave it up to you, but that's what, I think, I think that's what we're kinda...
Mayor, yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead, Councilman.
I, I don't, I wouldn't expect him to say there will be a barber shop in this spot.
Right.
Yeah, he can't guarantee that, but there's a, say, space number one has enough square footage for this type of activity, right? That's, that's my thought. I won't, I wouldn't hold you to it.
Would you be responsible to deliver the, the plating, commercial lot, the parking, the building shell that has the ability to accommodate these types of commercial uses?
Yes, that's my thought.
Yeah. Like, uh, what's that up there on the hill? Like the Maurice's where you, you got all those sections in there, you can, if I wanna be a tenant of yours, I could be a, an insurance guy in that, one of those, those slots and they're, they're multiple, so...
They're multiple.
Yeah, yeah. Or I could rent the whole thing out.
Mayor.
Councilman Brennan?
With that, if you're willing to agree to that, that's just me, I'm not talking for them. I would be willing to approve this today, uh, making sure Brenda and the develop, our development team can, can assure, uh, the, my improvement would be contingent upon a, an, a development agreement that, uh, basically has the language that we just used, I just used, not we, sorry.
Uh, go ahead, Brenda. So can we include, just amend the P U D agreement, um, with that language inside the, the P U D agreement that we have before us?
Yeah. And the language that we use is actually, is accurate, is that, uh, the use allowed within the, it's the zoning that ties it, whether it's a barber shop or not, a thirty-two hundred square feet, that's irrelevant to us.
Right.
That works for me, Councilman, thank you.
Councilman Brennan?
I, I, can we agree here, like, the minimum is thirty-two hundred square feet for the space and not, not less than that? And you can divide it amongst however...
That's what the space will accommodate. I, the, my only hesitation doesn't have anything to do with the size of the building, I just don't know, uh, city mountain homes, commercial zoning code well enough to know exactly what it will accommodate, that's, that's my only hesitation.
Okay.
If I'm like, there's other, there's some uses that might require additional parking, so the building size may, depending on the use that's proposed, we may need more parking, but we have a minimum parking standard already set there for thirty-two hundred square foot building.
Okay.
So, I'm flex somewhere for more parking. So that's why tagging it to a thirty-two hundred square foot might not, might not.
Right. Makes sense. Well, is that something you can, you and Brenda can, uh, work out or is that?
Oh, we're sorry.
I don't, I don't know the proper procedure to say, I'm willing to pass this with a, essentially a development agreement for the commercial building halfway.
Uh, Councilman Brennan, so what regards to the parking is they have provided off street parking, um, just outside of this, this corner too, so right next to the community space, so there are additional slots where folks could park to access that structure, um, where the commercial component will be. So I don't know that during our agreement that we need to say we must add more parking because there is additional street parking available.
Okay. But it'll be based off of whatever in the end goes in there? Per code?
As long as we can count that off street parking.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we can count the off street parking to go towards that regardless of what goes inside the building, as long as it's not excessive, which thirty-two hundred square feet, I can't imagine is gonna be excessive amount of books, uh, especially things this commercial component will have already built in, plant off, we will perhaps walk without protection.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking like, uh, maybe a yoga studio, I mean, that sort of thing.
Sure. Go ahead, Tiff.
You're gonna capture that parking change in, that we're gonna grant that in the agreement, correct? The off street is going to count as, 'cause they're, I see what you guys are saying, like a specific vendor outside of it's gonna require so many parking stalls, but later down the road, they will be in violation if the agreement doesn't have addressed the off street parking counting as part of it.
Off street parking.
Off street, you're sorry, yes, off, off, sorry. Yeah, off site.
So write that in there, please.
Does that make sense, Brenda?
I'll make sure we don't do it here.
Yes, I was saying that over...
It's always been about that.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I don't, I only hesitation is that...
Well, they were the pad size, like ten thousand.
With the ten thousand square foot lot, I don't think we're gonna have any problem with a thirty-two hundred square foot building and parking, yeah, per the city's code.
Sure.
I just don't know for a fact, but I don't think we're... We look at all the uses and sizes, we think we're...
Okay.
Just, just, um, within that lot, I think there's seven parking stalls available, one of those being A P A, is that correct?
Mayor?
Councilman Brennan?
All right, if I may, can I ask the council if there's any objection to this plan?
Uh, yes, Mayor.
Councilwoman Workla?
I, I like how you think so abstract. I learned from you. However, um, I don't ever like putting my name on anything unless I actually can see the final product. I've always kinda stand by that, um, 'cause it sounds like, you know, I mean, there's also these concerns that come up and some more concerns might come up after the fact. So I would actually like to see the proposal in writing before I, um, said yes.
The development, Mayor?
Councilman Brennan?
The development agreement?
Yeah, what you mentioned, mhm.
Bren.
Mayor? Councilman Harjo?
Sorry.
No, you're good. Um, Councilman, did you have more?
I was, I was just gonna specify that, the, the, the plant, in my mind, I would approve their request today with simply adding a development agreement and the, my approval would say contingent upon and also approved a development agreement. That way they know, they don't have to go back to the drawing board with the design of the plating of the property, um, and that's where my mind is at. And I, and I would also tell them too that her and I are gone in, in about three months, so, um, if you don't act quick, you may have another council to deal with.
If, if, if it's, if it's helpful, uh, Councilman Brennan, I think what you're asking for is if you look at the preliminary plat that's in front of you, it shows specifically what you're asking for.
Right.
What you're saying is in the development agreement, you wanna say, hey, you just wanna see a provision that says, hey, build this building on this lot as it's shown on the preliminary plat before you get your building from that hundred and forty, the hundred forty-fourth house.
Exa, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if, Mike, you'll see that development agreement back to you before you sign the order, so you, you will see it again before you sign.
Yeah, Councilman Harjo? Mayor, that was, that was gonna be my point here in that the preliminary plat representative map does show the building in existence with, with its parking. Um, we frequently have the contingent upon statements in our approvals for various matters, um, and the development agreement itself needs to...
Sorry.
Oh, I guess let the record reflect that the mayor stepped out, um, and that, uh, that those development agreements do come back to the council for that approval. Um, Councilwoman Workla, I definitely hear what you're, what you're saying there, there are some process and procedure in place where we will get to see those contingencies before, um, before that, the remainder of those associated documents get executed. And the mayor's back.
Okay, sorry about that. Councilman Brennan?
Legal? Uh, you know where I'm going with this based on what you've heard broadly, what would be the appropriate motion? Can I, can I approve the, the, um, ah, whatever, however it's worded, the, the P U D? Findings of fact, P U D, preliminary plat and P U D?
And then the Turner House preliminary plat with the conditions, including the following condition, that the planned unit development agreement reflects that, uh, the commercial lot, uh, will be, uh, required as provided in the plat map, uh, must be completed before the hundred and forty, I would say hundred forty-fourth, but it's not my decision.
That's fine.
Before the hundred and forty-fourth building permit can be issued. Now, it, it's already on there, exactly what it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Uh, if you wanna make it as a minimum of thirty-two hundred foot, you can add that if you want to, uh, but that would cover the bases entirely, right? Definitely not unique, though?
I'm not calling it a, a development agreement, I'm calling it a planned unit development.
That's what, um, that's what was asked, uh, whether it has to... That's what, um, that's what was asked, uh, whether it has to be a separate document. And if there's already a planned unit development agreement that's in place, that could be included within there.
Okay, that's fine.
It's just amending that document, uh, the cusp of this, uh, is the timing of when the commercial development occurs. That you want it to occur earlier in time. We're not, we're not changing the nature of the commercial development. That's already in place within that document.
Okay. The reality, since, since we have a, the, an action item for a planned unit development, I'd say, it need, that planned unit development needs to include the,
Development agreement.
Planned unit development needs to contain that the commercial buil, building of a minimum of thirty-two hundred square feet will, will be built before the hundred and forty-fourth permit is pulled.
Exactly.
Okay. Just copy that?
Say it verbatim, no.
Councilman Brennan?
And just, as processed, I just wanna make sure I get it right. Since it is its own action item for a PUD, approve it as I just kinda voiced to you or on maybe what Councilwoman Orkla is saying is, just kind of have a verbal agreement and bring it back when it's, when it is written.
I am of the opinion, I mean, I'm respecting what Councilwoman Orkla would like to see. This isn't, uh, we're gonna be adding about eleven words.
Okay.
To it. It's not gonna be that significant of a change.
Fair enough. Mayor?
Councilman Brennan?
Make a motion to, um, I gotta do one at a time here, right? Okay, um, under new business number two, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, planning and zoning commissions and recommendations, finding of fact to amend Turner House Depot preliminary plat with conditions.
Second? It's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for the question. Councilwoman Orkla?
Nay.
Councilman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilman Harjo?
Aye.
Okay. Let's run down to action item number three. Action and deliberation decision on planning and zoning commission and recommendation of finding effects to amend the entitled R four PUD Turner House Depot with conditions.
Mayor.
Councilman Brennan?
I'll make a motion to approve planning, zoning, commission, recommendation of finding of facts to amend, uh, the entitled R four PUD Turner House Depot with conditions and, uh, change through interlineation. I knew that's coming. Um, that, uh, the commercial building of not less than thirty-two hundred square feet, uh, must be built, uh, before the one hundred and forty-fourth residential building permit could be pulled.
Second?
It's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for the question. Councilman Harjo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Orkla?
Nay.
Councilman, uh, Brennan?
Aye.
Right? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Uh, we'll run down to new business number four. Approve the service agreement with the Mountain Home March Council and authorize the mayor and state clerk to sign. Council?
Mayor?
Councilwoman, excuse me, Councilwoman Orkla?
Um, I first want to say thank you so much Tiffany for, um, bringing this back on the agenda. I completely forgot we even spoke so much in depth about this, so thank you. Um, and then you helped refresh my memory of things we met, we spoke about during the budget cycle. So, um, I would like to add something to these contracts to the effect that each civil group could get up to said amount, whatever council determines for that year. Um, if they show a matching contribution through their own fundraising efforts before the next year's budget meeting or something to that effect. Um, second, also, um, I would like in this contract to say that they would need to submit their financial documents before the next budget meeting as part of the annual reporting process. And third, um, these groups need to report to council biannually on what they have provided for the community through their organization. So every six month timeframe. Um, those are my asks.
Mayor.
Councilman Harjo?
Councilwoman Orkla, can you repeat the last two?
Yeah, sure.
Councilwoman Orkla?
Sure, oh, thanks, mayor. Um, so, uh, second one is submit their financial documents before the next budget meeting as part of their annual reporting process. And then number three would be to report to the council biannually on what they have provided for the community, uh, through their organization every six months.
Mayor.
Councilman Brennan?
Councilwoman Orkla, if, um, for those three points to be met, I'm gonna focus on the third one for just a second. Report to council every six months. Um, if the contract is approved at the beginning of the fiscal year like we're going into and they ask for their money right at the very beginning of the fiscal year, what's the, what's the penalty for them not coming back again? Is the penalty just simply the next year's request?
Councilwoman Orkla?
I'm here, thank you. I.
Yeah, really quick, council, for, for these, um, one, two, three, four, five.
The rest of them.
The rest of them. Do you mind if I open this up so you guys can have a dialogue?
No, cause I'm already trying to break Robert's rule.
I'm gonna suspend Robert's rule so you can have some dialogue and break, go ahead, Tiff.
Can I just say before you discuss, there's some wonky timeline. So we just can't give them funds without this agreement. So, like, you've already allocated these funds in this coming budget cycle, so that's the number to be presented on these. So, almost kind of when you decide the funds you're going to do, you have to almost have these kind of drafted. You know what I mean? Like?
Yeah.
Cause I think that's where it gets confusing sometimes, like, oh, we're just bringing it back.
So what you're trying to say is have for the next?
Yeah.
This next fiscal is twenty-six?
Oh, yeah, not this one.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think, right? These projects, we've already passed the budget for this one.
I just want everyone to, and these are those funds. The seven thousand that's addressed in all of these is the funds that were allocated in this budget that we're about to start October first.
So this contract you're asking us to be for this year?
For October first to September thirty of twenty twenty-six. So that's where the confusion lies, right? You approved those funds, but we as staff cannot give those funds per our attorney to these organizations without having an agreement in place.
Mhm.
And so, really, I think your request is, hey, you groups, to come back and ask for these funds for twenty twenty-seven's budget. I want you to do these things, right? For better preparing for those requests of funds, if I'm hearing you right.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of confusing, yeah. So, it's twofold, right? We kind of already said we're gonna give them this money and so forth, but, um, a lot of, I think when we did our budget session back in July, at least for me, um, I had an issue where, um, some of them are super good at giving their budgets and others are not. And so I just want it to be uniformed where they would provide their budgets and show like what fundraising efforts they've done to contribute to show that we're just not giving them funds through the taxpayer. They're actually doing their work on their end to, to some type of match. Um, that, I guess, is null and void for this one, but I don't know, I'm just putting ideas out there.
Right. And listening to dialogue through the budget session, I think some of these civic groups volunteer a ton of time. So man hours is of value too. So it's not just like what other things you brought in from additional funds or fundraisers or pots of money. It could be just the amount of people volunteering their time to do good for the community.
Yeah.
And that, I think, has weight and value too.
Sure, but if it's documented, right? Instead of just a verbal report, would be awesome. I feel very strict about this, but I also don't wanna look like we're a welfare city. You see what I'm saying? That we're just giving out funds just because someone asked, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um.
And I have no problem asking them to come in and speak more frequently. If that's the case, staff has no objection to that.
Good, go away.
Thought I would give a little legal gloss. Not gonna cite twenty-two statute together, no, just twenty.
I know, I like it.
So, I'm thinking of that thing back in my life.
He loves this too much.
What you're doing, there was a previous time when this was given as a grant. It's not lawful. So what you're doing is you're contracting with these, these entities to do a function that's authorized into the statute. So it's a contract. And you're paying these people to perform a function that you otherwise could do as a city, but you're having them do it in, in your stead.
Oh, like TNR, okay.
Thanks, but I don't wear a legal hat.
Well, anyway, that's, that's, that's the idea. Some of it is based on the old idea that it was a grant, but it's not. They're performing a service. That's a cit, that's an authorized function in the city. So, and there might be some entities that were recently here who could come up on this list.
Everyone's gonna ask.
Yes, that's where it's at. Everyone can ask, right?
Yeah.
Mayor?
It's open.
He said it, I just copied you.
I drafted these originally, and so I found in the statute where the function is that you're performing, it's a statute totally off. So there's some of them that wouldn't qualify, you can ask, but is this a thing that a city can do? No.
One little fact, shoulder was sitting right here when it was a grant.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I, we learned it in a court case.
Yep.
Um, hard way. So, and I've had to tell other cities I represent or that our firm represents, they're like, we just, we give grants out. No, no you don't. Bar is over, kids. We're not doing that.
The, uh, standardization of expectation is something we've talked about a number of times. And, uh, and I'm definitely on board with, obviously, it looks at this juncture that we've missed the window for the upcoming, uh, for the upcoming effective budget cycle of twenty-five, twenty-six. That being said, um, I'd be happy to read, uh, a proposal for resolution to, uh, address this in a, in a more formalized standard, um, for these contracts for subsequent budget years. Definitely.
So the things, Councilwoman, you're, you're wanting to put in for the next fiscal budget, right? So then they already know in the head.
Yeah.
Can they come and ask?
Yeah, so I would like it, we missed the boat on this one. No, we missed the boat on this one. So then, we should have these contracts in place before our next budget cycle. And then that's what's presented in the exchange. Um, so we're just kinda, everyone's insane, yeah, except for you.
I don't know how you miss the boat when you haven't signed them or approved them.
I'm not agreeing that, that we're, that we've missed the boat.
The, the mountain money that's on these contracts is seven thousand, cause that's what we put in the budget. And so that's what I'm saying. It's like, my thing is I'm not just gonna give away seven thousand anymore. I wanna see what they have done to contribute to do a matching to that seven thousand, right? And so I guess that's where I'm saying is the boat, the, the finite number's already been determined because the budget cycle's closed out.
We also don't have to give the money out. I don't believe, right, the council can change its mind if, unless it's already been, unless the service has already been provided, I guess.
Well, this, I would imagine that the, sorry, all these entities are providing a service without your seven thousand dollars right now.
Sure.
Right?
I think that's, she wants to see it, right? She wants to see what that service is that they're providing.
You're not bound.
Yeah.
And I guess my, as a staff member, I would like whatever your edits are, so that we can let these people know, hey, let's have a heads up before June when you come into this presentation and we end up where we were of June of twenty twenty-five.
Hundred percent.
And so you can give them that and say, hey, they want you to come in February, give them some data, whatever your financials are, whatever they wanna give you, and be ready to move forward for, cause if not, if you leave it as it is, I guarantee June will be a repeat. And I don't want that.
No, exactly. And I also, so that's where that whole six month timeframe was in my head, you know, like trying to catch it before the budget session. So whatever month you think that makes sense, I, I would trust you to, you know, to help us, guide us with that, but, um.
So do you guys wanna approve these agreements?
No, not as is. I think, like, if, if you want them to report twice, twice a year, put that in there right now. If they don't report in, say, February, just as an example, and they don't follow, they don't follow what they're gonna sign here come October first, then they're not eligible to ask the next year, right? So, so put it in here right now. Whatever it is that we can agree upon, if they don't do it, they're not eligible next year. So that, that's why I say like the boat hasn't been missed.
Okay.
The, the dollar amount, like, the attorney just said, we're not bound to, to pay it. They haven't signed a contract for service yet. So, and, uh, maybe to make it easier on the council, I wouldn't say that every one of the nineteen groups, uh, all comes at the same meeting, right? So maybe, um, somewhere between, um, the fifth and the seventh month or something to that effect, you know?
Okay, so, council, are you okay with those requests putting in the contract?
Yeah.
Yeah? How about you, Councilman Brennan?
Remind me what the first one was again. I wrote down the second too.
So I'll just read here. I just said, uh, to add something to the fact that each civil group could get up to said amount, but we already did, well, okay, anyway. But council determines if they show a matching contribution through their own fundraising efforts before the next year's budget meeting.
Yeah, that's number one.
That's one, yeah. And then refresh your memory, two was the, um, financial documents need to be provided.
How deep do we wanna go with financial documents?
Can I?
So it's become a record of the public.
Okay. So, for example, can I, can I mention one of the groups I really like what they do? So the Arts Council, like, they really provide detailed documents. It's amazing. I love what they provide. Um, and it's clearly, uh, understandable and I can, you know, see what they, yeah, what they've done through the past year. That, to me, is a prime example of what should be presented as a, a budget document.
That's kind of a profit and loss, so to speak, isn't it? And, and as a five oh one, I worry C three is out there. Are, are they bound by any kind of, uh, Secretary of State to file a profit and loss or anything? I don't know how those work.
Might have to do, uh, like a nine ninety with the IRS, depending on how big they are. Sometimes it's a short form unless you're there.
So does in-kind match, like, time of service count as, uh, money?
I'd say, I think on there, the number one should also be, like, I've talked about the in-kind of labor.
Labor and volunteer.
Like calculating some hours should, I would think.
Well, I only look at like our in-kind, so like when we get our grant sheets, um, and it says in-kind, right? It doesn't put in man-hours. It just talks about a monetary value. And so that's what I was picturing is like, this is what they, this is what we'll provide, this is what we have done to match that. That's what I look at as a match, because I feel like man-hours can be kind of ambiguous, right? Um, in a way, like, oh, I took this phone call, you know, I'm gonna round it up to the, I don't know, I'm just.
Utilizing.
Yeah.
The, the example of the Arts Council, for instance, with, with, uh, the mural painting. How would you quantify the time of an artist over a two-week period?
Yeah, no, I mean.
Like, that's, that's the part where they received donations or, or sought donation and revenue to, and to purchase the goods or to seek donated paint or brushes or whatever. But the function of the factor, you know, like the, the factor of the function that they perform within the community, you, where, where you have matching funds, I would argue that in this particular instance, that the value of an artist is immeasurable to an extent. But should it not also count? Because that's a function of, of the civic group in front of us in that moment and a major portion of what this town is known for culturally. So.
I hear what you're all saying too. And to, to take that softer approach, I get it. But you know how I feel about the donations as a whole, right? Donations, right? Nah, they are. I, I, I think, uh, I think I would go more in line with Councilwoman Orkla on this and say, hey, you're getting taxpayer dollars, right? And you're not, you're not gonna come before me and say, an artist who painted a, a mural, um, uh, that was seven thousand, man, seven thousand dollars worth of their time. So please give us seven thousand dollars.
I have firsthand knowledge of artists in this town who have charged more for that for murals in this state.
I, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's not, right, but for, for them to get a cash, um, payment from the city, like, I would support the, the cash match, like, that, that they must, they must provide.
Are you guys gonna, um, limit to just these entities too? Or are you gonna open it up to everybody?
No.
That's what, I'm sure. Okay. Okay, I'm just asking the question. Okay, I'm just asking the question, I'm just asking the question.
I don't think one, any one of these entities is going to say that one mural was of value of seven thousand. I think all of them have some integrity and character, and are going to show you funds to volunteer dollars, but the one group, they all volunteer and have a large group, but I can tell you the museum...
That's what I was going to bring up, yeah.
And the visitor center run and open their hours based on volunteers. And so I think that should have value, their city buildings, that yes, we maintain, and I know that topic was touchy, but their doors are open for our community based off volunteers, and that has some weight, I believe, in some of their fund requests.
I, I don't think any of the entities have any issue raising seven thousand, though. I think they've all done really good of, of fundraising, so the museum, that was the one I was worried about the most, because that, they, they're selling pies and they're, you know, so, or there's Meals on Wheels, they're having to raise all their dollars too.
I completely agree, they all are, are very much monetarily able to probably find matching. But I also think
Yeah.
the benefit of people volunteering in those organizations has weight.
Okay, sorry, we got, so second one was what? The, the cash match, or just come back there six months?
The first one was cash mash, cash match. The second one was financial documents need to be submitted before the next budget meeting. And then the third one was the biannual reporting.
The, the financial documents were like a loss. And it was pretty some, it was, if I could give them, Arts Council, that's the example.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think.
That's kind of what you're going for?
Sure.
And those are what you've already emailed me, so I've got them.
Okay.
Okay, so council, you good adding that language in there? So, your motion?
Do you want them, do you want them coming back with all that language before you refer them?
She likes to see stuff.
I say, no, that's good, yeah. Can you do that, I can, I'll make a ta- I'll table it, yeah.
I'm going to tell you this, I'm going to put them in consent though, so it'll be one good motion, next meeting.
I'm going to, I'm going to pull all of them, just at the end.
I deliberately put them because I didn't want them pulled, they pulled it to fall.
Oh, you're so good. All right, um, so I'll, I'll make a motion to table, all right, so I will make a motion to table new business number four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, what? Okay. To the next city council meeting, to be on the... To be on the agenda.
Second. Okay, it's been motioned and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for the question, Councilman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Worklaw?
Aye.
Councilman Scott?
Aye.
Or Councilman Harjo? Sorry, man, I'm sorry. All right, we're going to run down to ordinances. Ordinance eighteen oh eight, amending Mountain Home Code, uh, Title VII, Chapter Three, Section Two.
Mayor.
Councilman Har- Councilman Harjo?
Make a motion to suspend the three reading rule and read this ordinance by title only for its one and only reading tonight.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for the question, Councilman Harjo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Worklaw?
Aye.
Councilman Brennan?
Aye.
Tiff, please, Tiffany, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance eighteen oh eight, new ordinance of the city of Mountain Home, amending Title VII, Chapter Three, Section Two of Mountain Home City Code of Mountain Home by adding the exception for temporary project specifically and providing an effective date.
Council, you've heard this ordinance read, do you wish it to pass? Councilman Brennan?
Uh, can you come back to me?
Yep.
I'm reading the, the change just again really quick.
Councilman Harjo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Worklaw?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Brennan, sorry. What?
I've got your change in there.
Okay. All right, final comments, council?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Worklaw?
Okay, let me pull it up real quick, I have two, just one second. All right, so the first one, so, um, I was at the Airport Advisory Committee at their special meeting, and they did put today as a date that they were going to present the, the, the two opposing issues with, with the frequency change, um, or to not change it. I know that you're the, um... Liaison, thank you. So I just, um, I know, I guess, where we're at with that, or do we have an update on that?
Mayor.
Councilman Harjo?
The Airport Advisory Committee had input on both sides of the topic, both pro and con, and the, the submitters of that information, um, I've not seen anything formalized at this juncture. The discussion at the point was that, uh, one specific committee member was going to coalesce kind of the abstract and the, and the pros and cons, and that they were, as, as a group, going to select a person to discuss the, the cons and a person to discuss the pros that were on either side of that topic. And I don't believe that is ready for today. And it was, while it was discussed that, that this would be the date, the, obviously, time constraints for, um, for everyone is an issue. We can certainly check in with, uh, with the chairman of that committee, but I, at this juncture, I don't, I don't have a specific date on when that will be ready.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Worklaw?
Um, do they have a date of the next Airport Advisory Meeting? Because I didn't, I didn't think there was one given, unless I missed it.
There is, um...
Go ahead, Chris.
They didn't set a date?
That falls on the quarterly on that particular day, though. When, uh, when we receive the notification for those things, it typically comes from, um, a member of city staff in city hall that kind of coordinates the, the timing of that. I thought they had a fairly rigid schedule, not that they have to declare that date in the thing, but...
Go ahead, Chris.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Worklaw?
I don't think this issue needs to be pushed out any further than it already has. And I was also to the under, uh, was led to believe it was going to be presented at this meeting. Mayor, can you please, or, or the Councilman Harjo, can we please, uh, um, get a date set if, if, if we need to put it on the next meeting, um, or a month from now? And then also get a date set for the next Airport Advisory Meeting? I don't want it, the appearance that we're pushing it down the road or we're ignoring the issue, okay? And because, especially when I went to the last several meetings, it's, there are strong opposing sides, so I want to hear, be able, we need to be able to hear both sides, so...
Mayor.
Councilman Harjo?
Absolutely, um, I will follow up with, uh, staff and the chairman of that, of that committee. I would, I would expect that to, because of the nature of the severity of the implications of that, that again, they may need time to coalesce all of the, all of the data supporting either pro or con. But I will work to get that established.
Thank you. Mayor?
Councilwoman Worklaw?
So then my second one, Tiffany, um, so, please help me here, do we need to have a public hearing to increase the pay for P and Z? No? Is that just something that we would put in our budget?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll just make note of that for myself for the next budget session, okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Any else, council? If none? Oh, Councilman Brennan?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to enter executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six subsection one and F.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for the question, Councilman Harjo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Worklaw?
Aye.
Councilman Brennan?
Aye.
All right, executive session.
Can we verify that team's only pants off?
I need to...
Put me on this dang thing as smaller than my eyeballs, let me see.